I would like to call the regular meeting of the Planning Commission to order at 6:03. Pledge of Allegiance, Commissioner Mora, can you lead us, please?
Ready to begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Planning Secretary, may we have roll call, please?
Definitely, Madam Chair. Commissioner Flores?
Present.
Commissioner Jimenez?
Present.
Commissioner Mora?
Present.
Vice Chair Ayala?
Present.
Chair Carvajal?
Present.
All present?
Thank you. Ex parte communications, this section is intended to allow all officials the opportunity to reveal any disclosure regarding site visits or ex parte communications about public hearings. Are there any ex parte communications? Commissioner Flores?
None.
Commissioner Jimenez?
None.
Commissioner Mora?
None.
Vice Chair Ayala?
None.
Chair Carvajal, none. Consent agenda. Consent agenda items are considered routine matters which may be enacted by one motion and roll call vote. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately by the Planning Commission. This point also, would anyone like to speak on any consent agenda calendar item? With that, please, let's see, we have item A, can we take them all? Yep. For consent items, five A, B, and C, is there a motion and a second for approval of the consent items?
We'll move.
Commissioner Mora, may I have a second?
A second.
Commissioner Ayala? Planning Secretary, roll call, please.
Commissioner Flores?
Aye.
Commissioner Jimenez?
Aye.
Commissioner Mora?
Aye.
Vice Chair Ayala?
Aye.
Chair Carvajal?
Aye.
Passes five zero?
Thank you, so ordered. Our attorney?
Yes, Madam Chair, upon receipt of written notice of the Commission's action, the applicant or any other interested party has fourteen days to file an appeal of the Commission's action to the City Council.
Thank you. Okay, item number six, public hearing category exempt, CEQA guidelines, section 15301, class one, alcohol sales conditional use permit, CUP case number eighty-five. Request for approval for the alcohol sales conditional use permit, case number eighty-five, to allow the operation and maintenance of an alcoholic beverage use involving the warehousing and distribution of alcoholic beverages at Bay Cities Packaging, located at nine two zero six Santa Fe Springs Road within the heavy manufacturing M2 zone Bay Cities Packaging and Design. I'd like to call upon Code Enforcement Officer Luis Colazo to please present item six.
Good evening, Commissioners. Item six does involve a conditional use for alcohol sales for warehouse and distribution. The subject location is on Santa Fe Springs Road, ninety-two oh six Santa Fe Springs Road. The business has been at this location since November twenty twenty-one. They occupy a parcel of approximately six point forty-six acres. It's developed with a building, industrial building of one hundred fifty-one thousand three hundred ninety-seven square feet. The areas, the title mentioned, it is M2, heavy manufacturing, as well as the surrounding buildings and the properties in that area. The property to the northeast is within the city of Squidier and is occupied by York Field. This is a picture of Bay Cities from the, from the street level. It's an attractive building, been there for a long time now. It's owned by Oatman's Construction Company. Although they, it's called Oatman's Construction Company, they're also property owners of a lot of the buildings they construct. Let me tell you a little about Bay Cities. They are a, they are designers and manufacturers of displays for merchandise. Things like cosmetics, food products, hand tools, and several other products. They manufacture these items for stores like Home Depot, Costco, Target, and Petco. And so, on the top left-hand corner, you can see some of their packaging. They also create shipping container, or shipping boxes, like you see on the bottom right-hand corner. So, not everything is displayed. Bay Cities will be also designing displays for alcohol beverages and therefore storing the alcohol on the premises. As a result, they are required to comply with section one fifty-five point six two eight of the city's code pertaining to alcohol, alcohol storage and distribution, which requires a conditional use permit. Staff sent notices to property owners within five hundred feet of that location and notify them of this public hearing. And with notices were also posted in City Hall and our kiosk out in the, in the parkway, in our park area. Staff believes that there will, staff believes that the use will not have any negative impacts to the general area and is therefore recommending the six items that you see in the right-hand corner and on your agenda, the first page, which includes the PC's adoption of resolution two forty-four dash twenty twenty-three, which carries a recommendation to the City Council to approve alcohol sales condition use permit case eighty-five. That concludes my presentation. I can answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you. Do any of the Commissioners have any questions on this item for, for Louis or any of the planning staff?
Just one, Louis. So, there was no alcohol up until this time, until they decided to package four alcohol beverages.
That's correct.
And, so this is going to be for wholesale or distribution to retailers?
Yes.
No public sales?
Nothing would be sold at that location. What they'll do is create the boxes for displays. Let's say, for example, tequila. They create the design for that display. Then they put the tequila bottles or the bottles into the display and then ship them out that way. So, when this will get to the store, all the store needs to do is just open the box that it comes in, pull it out, and everything's contained in that area. But you reminded me of something. They are also applying concurrently with their alcohol sales licensing with ABC, so that's part of the approval process. Not from you, but from ABC.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I'd like to open the public hearing at six twelve. I'd like to call upon the applicants. If they wish to speak, please approach the podium or raise a hand function at this time. Are they here?
I believe they are not here.
Okay. Again, do any of the Commissioners have any questions other than Commissioner Mora? Is there anyone from the audience wishing to speak on this matter? So, please use a raise hand function or approach the podium. Okay. Planning Commissioner Secretary, were there any comments submitted via email for item number six?
No, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Okay. Is there a motion to approve resolution number two four four dash two zero two three for alcohol sales conditional use permit case number eighty-five?
All motion.
All second.
Commissioner Ayala and Jimenez, Planning Secretary, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Flores?
Aye.
Commissioner Jimenez?
Aye.
Commissioner Mora?
Aye.
Vice Chair Ayala? Chair Carvajal?
Aye.
Passes five zero?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Madam Chair, upon receipt of written notice of the Commission's action, the applicant or any other interested party has fourteen days to file an appeal of the Commission's action to the City Council.
Thank you. Item number seven, category exempt, CEQA guidelines, section one five three zero one, class one, conditional use permit case number five five two dash five. A request for a ten-year permit extension to allow the ongoing operation and maintenance of an existing sixty-foot-high wireless telecommunications facility, monopole, and related unmanned equipment room at eighty-nine twenty-three Pioneer Boulevard within the M2 heavy manufacturing zone. Network connects on behalf of Crown Castle. I'd like to call upon Assistant Planner Claudia Jimenez to please present item seven.
Thank you, Chairperson. Good evening, Planning Commissioners and members of the staff and staff members. Tonight, I will be presenting item number seven, CUP five five two dash five. So, conditional use permit case number five five two is located at eighty-nine twenty-three Pioneer Boulevard. The applicant tonight would be Network Conex on behalf of T-Mobile West. The zone is M2 heavy manufacturing and the general plan designation is open space. Little background on the monopole. The subject monopole was approved and constructed under CUP five five two back in nineteen ninety-eight, which allowed the construction of an approximately sixty-foot-high tall monopole facility and equipment shelter. And since the original approval length of ten years lapsed, the subject CUP is being reconsidered tonight. The request for tonight is as follows. The Network Connects is seeking approval for a ten-year extension to allow the ongoing operation and maintenance of an existing sixty-foot-high unmanned wireless facility, telecommunications facility, and related equipment shelter. And there's no modifications that are being proposed tonight as part of this extension. Pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act, CEQA, staff finds and determines the project to be categorically exempt per section one five three zero one, class I, class one, existing facilities. Also to add, the monopole is constructed back in nineteen ninety-eight. There's no addition to the existing structure or lease area and no structure or lease, and no modifications proposed. And the use remains unchanged. Public hearings was mailed out on August third, twenty twenty-three, mailed to all property owners within five hundred feet. It was also published in the Whittier Daily News and posted in the City Hall and Town Center Hall kiosk and the City Library, and no comments or inquiries were received as of today. Were your consideration tonight. An existing wireless telecommunications facility, it remains unchanged. No addition to the existing structure or lease area. No modifications are being proposed tonight. Not detrimental to persons or properties in the surrounding area and amiss a criteria for granting an extension of the CUP. So, staff recommendations for you is find and determine that the project is categorically exempt from CEQA under section one five three zero one, class one, for existing facilities. Approve conditional use permit case number five type two dash five. It's subject to conditions as stated within the attached resolution. And adopt resolution number two four five twenty twenty-three, which incorporates this Planning Commission's findings and actions regarding this matter. And this concludes my presentation. I do have the applicant before you via Zoom.
Thank you. Do any of the Commissioners have any questions at this time for the planning staff? Hearing none. I'd like to open the public hearing at six sixteen. I would like to call upon the applicant. If they wish to speak, please approach the podium or use a raise hand function at this time.
Linda McClung has her hand up.
Has hand up? Please, if you could, your name and city of residence for the record. You have three minutes.
Linda McClung. Can you hear me?
We could hear you, ma'am.
Perfect, okay. I just wanted to introduce myself. I'm here on, I work for what Network Connects and I'm present here on behalf of Crown Castle. And so, I'm here to answer any questions if needed regarding the existing monopole equipment.
Thank you. Do any of the Commissioners have any questions for the applicant representative? Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak on this matter? If so, please use the raise hand or approach the podium. Hearing none. I'd like to close the public hearing at six eighteen PM. Do the Commissioners have any comments regarding this matter? This will be the time, of course, for our deliberation. If not, is there a motion to approve resolution number two four five dash two zero two three for conditional use permit case number five five two dash five? Can I have a motion?
I'll move, item seven.
Commissioner Jimenez, may I have a second?
One second.
Commissioner Mora, Planning Secretary, roll call vote, please.
Definitely. Commissioner Flores?
Aye.
Commissioner Jimenez?
Aye.
Commissioner Mora?
Aye.
Vice Chair Ayala? Chair Carvajal?
Aye.
Passes five zero?
Thank you.
Through the chair, upon receipt of written notice of the Commission's action, the applicant or any other interested party has fourteen days to file an appeal of the Commission's action to the City Council.
Thank you, sir. Item number eight, public hearing category exempt, CEQA guidelines, section one five three zero one, class one, conditional use permit case number seven twenty-eight dash one. A request for a ten-year extension to allow the ongoing operation and maintenance of an unmanned wireless telecommunications facility and related equipment on and at the base of an existing hundred and twenty-six and a half foot high SoCal Transmission Tower located at one one zero four seven Davenport Street within the A1 light agricultural zone, T-Mobile West LLC. I'd like to call upon Planning Intern Rudy Lopez to please present item number eight.
Good afternoon, Planning Commissioners. My name's Rudy Lopez. I am the Planning Intern for the City's Plannings Department, and today I'll be presenting to you conditional use permit case seven twenty-eight dash one. So, CUP seven twenty-eight dash one is located at one one zero four seven Davenport Street. The applicant is Network Connects on behalf of T-Mobile West. The zone is A1 light agricultural and the land use designation is open space. So, in two thousand and seven, the subject wireless telecommunications facility was approved via a building permit, but a conditional use permit was not required at the time of the building permit approval. However, on March twenty-six, two thousand and twelve, a CUP was granted for a ten-year approval of the subject facility. The request from Network Connects is a ten-year extension to allow the ongoing operation and maintenance of an unmanned wireless telecommunications facility and related equipment on and at the base of an existing one hundred and twenty-six feet, five-inch-high Southern California Edison Transmission Tower on the subject site. The time extension request is pursuant to code section one fifty-seven point zero four dash A, which states that all wireless telecommunications facilities are subject to the granting of a conditional use permit. Wireless telecommunications facility conditional use permits are subject to the Planning Commission's approval unless otherwise provided for this chapter. And I would like to make it very clear that no modifications are proposed as a part of this extension. In regard to the general plan, there are two land use element policies that are related to this application. Land Use Policy four point eight experiential enhancement, which states that the wireless tower will continue to enhance wireless connectivity for residents in the surrounding area and Land Use Policy six point two neighborhood improvement, which states that the existing coverage report indicates that the project serves the surrounding residential neighborhoods. Staff finds the project to be categorically exempt under section one five three zero one, class one, existing facilities of the California Environmental Quality Act because the existing Southern California Edison Tower, because there is an existing Southern California Edison Transmission Tower, there is no addition to the building or lease area, and the use remains unchanged. A public hearing notice was sent out on August third, twenty twenty-three. It was mailed to all the property owners within five hundred feet, published in the Whittier Daily News, and it was posted in City Hall, Town Center Hall, and the City Library. And as of today, no comments were received. So, Commissioners, please consider that this is an existing wireless telecommunications facility. The use remains unchanged. There are no modifications being proposed. The carrier is utilizing existing infrastructure, and the infrastructure will not be detrimental to persons or properties in the surrounding area from the RFR, which is the radio frequency report, the way that concludes that the project will continue to comply with FCC standards and the applicant meets criteria for the granting of an extension for its CUP. So, staff recommends that you find and determine that the project is categorically exempt from CEQA under section one five three zero one, class one, existing facilities. Staff recommends that you approve conditional use permit case number seven twenty-eight dash one, subject to the conditions that are stated within the attached resolutions, and that you adopt resolution number two four six dash twenty twenty-three, which indicate, which incorporates the Planning Commission's findings and actions regarding this matter. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like, I'm sorry, do any of the Commissioners have any questions on this item for staff? Okay, I'd like to open the public hearing at six twenty-four. And I'd like to call upon the applicant. If they wish to speak, please approach the podium or raise the raise hand function at this time.
They are on Zoom.
On Zoom, fabulous. And if they could state their name and city of residence for the record to address the Planning Commission with a three-minute time limit.
Yes, this is Linda McClung in Fort Worth, California, and I'm here to represent T-Mobile for the continued use of their existing wireless facility, and I'm also attending to answer any questions that might be presented.
Thank you so much. Is there any questions for the applicant representative? Is there anyone from the audience wishing to speak on this matter? Fabulous. Planning Commissioner Secretary, were there any comments submitted via email for item number eight?
No, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much. I would like to close the public hearing at six twenty-five. Do the Commissioners again have any comments regarding this matter? If not, is there a motion to approve resolution number two forty-six dash two zero two three for conditional use permit case number seven twenty-one dash one? May I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Commissioner Ayala, may I have a second? Commissioner Flores, Planning Secretary, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Flores?
Aye.
Commissioner Jimenez?
Aye.
Commissioner Mora?
Aye.
Vice Chair Ayala?
Aye.
Chair Carvajal?
Aye.
Passes five zero?
Thank you, so ordered.
Madam Chairman, upon receipt of written notice of the Commission's action, the applicant or any other interested party has fourteen days to file an appeal of the Commission's action to the City Council. Upon expiration of the fourteen days, the Planning Commission's decision becomes effective and final.
Thank you. Item number nine, public hearing amendment to conditional use permit case number seven forty-nine, use involving vinegar at one three one one seven Molet Street within the M2 heavy manufacturing zone, Ota Fuku Foods, Inc. I would like to call upon Assistant Planner Claudia Jimenez to please present item nine.
Thank you. Good evening again. Tonight, I will be presenting item number nine for CUP seven four nine for the applicant Ota Fuku Foods Incorporated, and they're located at one three one one seven Molet Street. Again, the applicant is Ota Fuku Foods, Inc., and the zone is M2, M2 heavy manufacturing, and the general plan designation is industrial. A little background on Ota Fuku. So, Ota Fuku Foods was founded in Hiroshima, Hiroshima, Japan back in nineteen twenty-two, which now makes it a hundred and one years old. And they export products over fifty countries and over two thousand products. The manufacturing plans include China location, Japan, Malaysia, and in Santa Fe Springs as of twenty fourteen. The founder did have a quote, and I did put that up for you, so you can see his little quote that he has. The subject manufacturing facility involving vinegar was approved under CUP seven four nine back in two thousand and fourteen. Additionally, the first compliance review was conducted back in March in two thousand and sixteen, operating without complaints or incidents. And the facility manufactures various spices. Vinegar is only a small ingredient, only about six percent of it. The request before you tonight, Ota Fuku Foods, Inc. is seeking approval to amend their existing conditions of approval in order to increase the hours of operation due to production growth, and this was after our pandemic or COVID. And the hours of operation based on the existing conditions of approval were from Monday through Friday, nine AM to six PM. And because in production increase, they're proposing to increase our hours now and days from Monday through Saturday from four thirty AM to eight thirty PM. So, there are proposed shifts. There's a filling and office shift from nine to five PM, which only, will have only a maximum of about twenty-three employees. There's also a mixing shifts. There's two of them, from four thirty to one PM, and the maximum employees would be five per shift. One, four thirty to one PM, and then one from twelve to eight thirty PM. Additionally, a parking study was completed as part of the original CUP, and it concluded that the subject of sixteen thousand four hundred square feet industrial building would require to provide about thirty-three parking stalls, and the applicant provided thirty-six, and it meets the minimum parking requirement. Additionally, the zoning ordinance calculates parking based on the square footage of the building and not based on the number of occupants. Additionally, it should be noted that the staff recommends that condition number fifteen be amended to allow future changes to the hours of operation, and they be reviewed and approved by discretion of the Director of Planning and his or designated. Pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act, which is CEQA, an initial study was prepared to determine the project's impact of the environment. Planning staff finds and determines the project to be categorically exempt per section one five three zero one, class one, for existing facilities. No additional square footage is proposed, and the existing use, with the exception of the hours of operation, will remain unchanged. And additional environmental analysis is therefore not necessary to meet the requirements of CEQA. Public hearing notices were sent out on August third, twenty twenty-three. Notices were mailed to all property owners within five hundred, five hundred feet. They were also published in the Whittier Daily News, posted in the City Hall, Town Center Hall, kiosk, and the City Library, and no comments and inquiries were received as of today. Were your consideration tonight. The applicant is requesting to amend the existing conditions of approval to change the hours of operation in order to increase our overall production in the city of Santa Fe Springs. Staff finds that the changes in the hours of operation will not be detrimental to the following reasons. The site accommodates the parking demand associated with the proposed changes to the existing hours of operation. The proposed increase in hours of operation does not create a higher parking demand, and there are no interior, exterior, or parking area modifications proposed and or required. Staff recommendations is find and determine that the project is categorically exempt from CEQA under section one five three zero one, class one, of the existing facilities. Approve amendment to conditional use case number seven four nine, subject to conditions of approval within the attached resolution, and adopt resolution number two four seven twenty twenty-three, which incorporates the Planning Commission's findings and actions regarding this matter. And this concludes my presentation. I do have the applicant via Zoom should have any questions for them. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any of the Commissioners have any questions on this item for the planning staff?
Yes, sir.
How far is this facility from residential? And from the four thirty AM to six AM, would it conform to noise ordinance?
Molet. I'm in this, I'm approximately about a thousand, a thousand feet, maybe even more. There's no residential nearby where this location is at. If you want to chime in, any staff wants to chime in on the location as well, off on Molet, just to give you an exact approximate.
I can confirm that the noise ordinance would still be in effect regardless of location and distance from the residential properties.
So, they would have to wait until, or conform to the noise ordinance, right?
Correct.
Okay.
And it's, it's, the noise ordinance provides limitations based on the adjacent land uses. So, there's requirements and restrictions for noise based on what is adjacent to the property.
Any other questions for planning staff? I'd like to open the public hearing at six thirty-one. I'd like to call upon the applicant if they'd wish to speak. Please announce your name and city of residence, and you have a three limit, time limit.
Madam Chair, although the representative is online via Zoom, his raised hand is not.
Yes, hello, my name is Sipiano Rios. I've been working with Ota Fuku Foods for ten years, and my address of residency is at ten fifty-seven Brownin Boulevard, Los Angeles, California. SIP code nine zero zero three seven. So here at Ota Fuku Foods, uh, we've been doing um, manufacturing Asian-style sauces for the last ten years, um. And our business operations has modified, or we want to modify them a little bit, but uh, all our surrounding buildings and, and other companies, they're all heavy manufacturing or uh warehouses. So there's really no residential nearby, or maybe about three blocks away.
Thank you so much. Do any of the commissioners have any questions for the applicant's representative? Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak on this matter? So please use rates on function or approach the podium. Planning Commissioner Secretary, were there any comments submitted via email for item number nine?
No, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I would like to close the public hearing at six thirty-five. Do the commissioners have any comments regarding this matter? If not, may I have a motion to approve resolution number two forty-seven dash two zero two-three for amendment to conditional use permit case number seven forty-nine? May I have a motion, please?
I'll move.
Commissioner Jimenez, may I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Mora, Planning Secretary, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Flores?
Aye.
Commissioner Jimenez?
Aye.
Commissioner Mora?
Aye.
Vice Chair Ayala? Chair Carboha?
Aye.
Passes five zero.
Thank you so much. So ordered.
Uh, Madam Chairwoman, the commission's action on this item shall become effective fourteen days after receipt by the applicant of written notice of the commission's action. The applicant and any other interested party may file an appeal of the commission's action to the city council. The appeal must be in writing and filed with the city clerk within the previously mentioned fourteen-day period.
Thank you so much. Item number ten. Public hearing CEQA addendum to the city's Certified Environmental Impact Report, EIR, for the general plan and targeted zoning ordinance update. Uh, schedule number two zero two one zero five zero one nine three, tentative parcel map number eight four one one six, development, development plan approval, DPA case number one thousand and one thousand and one. TPM number eight four one one six, a request for approval to subdivide an existing parcel, APM eight zero zero nine dash zero two three dash zero two seven into two parcels. Parcel one of plus three point three three acres and parcel two of plus nine, three point nine nine acres. DPA case number one thousand, a request for approval to allow the construction of a new sixty-nine thousand six hundred and fifty square foot concrete tilt-up industrial building and related improvements on the subject site parcel one. DPA case number one zero zero one, a request for approval to allow the construction of a new seventy-five thousand fifty square foot concrete tilt-up industrial building and related improvements on the subject line for parcel number two. The subject site is located at one oh eight four five Norwalk Boulevard, APN eight zero zero nine dash zero two three dash twenty-seven within the M-two heavy manufacturing zone, Orbis Real Estate Partners. I'd like to call upon Associate Planner Vince Velasco to please present item number ten.
Yeah, good evening, planning commissioners. Thank you, Madam Chair, for reading the title. I think that's everything that you need to know about the project. I'm only kidding. I'd like to start the presentation by just acknowledging that my colleague Jimmy Wong, uh, he's not here tonight, but he has been the staff member to work diligently with the applicant. Uh, prepare the staff reports for you tonight. I'm simply just providing uh, his presentation. So I wanted that to be known. So diving into item number ten, again, as Madam Chair said, this is regarding tentative parcel map number eight four one one six and development plan approvals case numbers one thousand and one thousand and one. The subject property is located at one zero eight four five Norwalk Boulevard, or otherwise the southwest corner of Florence Avenue and Norwalk Boulevard, and also surrounds a local street known as Coons Avenue. The existing site measures approximately six point four four acres comprised of a single one parcel, and the applicant, as you mentioned, was Orbis Real Estate Partners. Subject site has a general plan land use designation of business park, but has a zoning designation of M-two heavy manufacturing. And that is because the subject site is part of our targeted zoning ordinance update in which we will be uh, changing the, the zone of, from M-two to ML, limited manufacturing. So this is just a visual representation of the existing land use and the existing zoning. The subject site is currently occupied by several different tenants, including Tech Steel International, Performance Automotive, and Silverio Party Supply. The applicant recently purchased the property and is proposing to demolish all existing buildings and structures and construct two concrete tilt-up industrial buildings. Here you'll see the existing site conditions uh, via an aerial image. So you can see the existing structures along with the existing street that runs through, known as Coons Avenue. And one more looking north. So again, the request before you, the tentative parcel map is to sub- subdivide the existing parcel into two parcels, and then also construct two buildings, one approximately sixty-nine thousand six hundred and fifty square feet on parcel one, and the other approximately seventy-five thousand square feet on parcel two. Now, it should be noted that the proposed project will involve the vacating of Coons Avenue, which will require the city council's approval. So beginning with tentative parcel map, again, the existing parcel is approximately six point four four acres, and the easement known as Coons Avenue is approximately point eight eight acres. Therefore, by vacationing or vacating Coons Avenue, the site becomes approximately seven point three two acres. Now, the proposal is to subdivide the property into two, parcel one being three point three three acres, and parcel two being approximately three point nine nine acres. Again, uh, Coons Avenue would then go away. So diving into the first development plan approval, case number one thousand. Again, uh, this building will be approximately sixty-nine thousand six hundred and fifty square feet. There will be parking and landscaping improvements, approximately, it will be forty foot feet setback from Florence Avenue, and ninety-five feet setback from Norwalk Boulevard. There will be two entryways, seven dock-high doors, one grade-level door, a fourteen-foot-high screen wall with an eight-foot-high fence. The trash enclosure will be located strategically behind said screen wall. And there will also be an employee patio area uh, located uh, near, well, not near, but on the uh, Norwalk Boulevard side. Let's see if this works. Uh, right, right there, right there. There you can see the employee patio area. And for the floor plan, there's approximately sixty-one thousand six hundred and fifty square feet designated to warehouse with approximately eight thousand square feet designated for office area, including the first floor and the mezzanine. The project is proposing to exceed the city's minimum requirements for landscaping. And for parking, uh, building one will be short ten parking spaces per the city's uh, parking requirements. However, as we'll move through the slides, you'll see that building two is providing a surplus of thirteen parking stalls. Therefore, ten of those surplus parking stalls will be designated for building one. There will be a documented parking agreement that will be recorded for the, the property to establish that shared agreement. Here are the elevations showing you a very nice contemporary design. It has blue reflective glazing, height variations, massing variations, the use of wood fiber panels, and color variations. So moving on to building number two, known as DPA one thousand and one. This building will be approximately seventy-five thousand fifty square feet, also provide parking and landscaping improvements, be setback ninety-one feet from Norwalk Boulevard. It also has two entryways, eight dock-high doors, one grade-level door. Again, a fourteen-foot-high screen wall with an eight-foot-high fence. Again, the trash enclosure will be strategically located behind the screen wall. There is also a thirty-nine-foot buffer between the southern part of the building and the uh, property to the south, which is currently a mobile home park. And then also uh, at the employee patio area that will be located along Norwalk Boulevard. Approximately sixty-five thousand fifty square feet will be designated for warehouse at building number two, and approximately ten thousand square feet, including first floor and mezzanine, will be designated for office use. Again, the proposed project for building two will exceed the city's requirements for landscaping, and it also should be known that the trees and landscaping uh, are also provided along the southern property to create more of a landscape buffer between the building and the property to the south. So as previously mentioned, building number two, or site number two, will provide thirteen surplus parking stalls, and ten of those thirteen will be designated for building number one. Therefore, as a combined project, building one and building two will therefore meet the city's parking requirements. And again, the architectural match building number one with its contemporary design, the blue reflective glazing, height variation, massing variation, the use of wood fiber panels, and the color variation. And this is the ta-da moment. We have the nice rendering showing what the project will look like uh, once it's completed. And here is another rendering viewpoint of building number two to the south. So for the CEQA analysis, uh, it was determined that an addendum to the general plan EIR was warranted for this, this project. So if you recall, back in February of twenty twenty-two, with the twenty forty general plan update, there was an EIR that was certified and adopted. That EIR identified the Coons site as a potential location for a commercial business park up to a hundred and ten thousand five hundred square feet. So with this project, the CEQA analysis looked at the general plan EIR and made an addendum based on the specific uh, I, identity of this proposal. And the, and the proposed industrial project satisfies the criteria outlined in the CEQA guidelines, section one five one six four, for the preparation of an addendum to this certified EIR. The proposed project does not meet any of the conditions outlined in section one fifty-five or one fifty-one sixty-two that would require the preparation of a subsequent EIR, and those findings were provided to you in the resolution. The proposed project does satisfy the criteria outlined in the CEQA guidelines for the preparation of the addendum. Uh, does not necessitate any changes or additions to the city's certified EIR for the general plan and the targeted zoning ordinance update. And based on the submitted addendum, its supporting documents, the proposed industrial development will not introduce any new significant impacts or substantially amplify any previously identified significant impacts. Now, normally with a mitigated negative declaration or an EIR, there's a public review period. However, it should be noted that pursuant to one fifty-one sixty-four uh, subsection C of the CEQA guidelines, there is no public review for uh, or posting requirement for this addendum to the EIR. Attachment A of the addendum provides a comprehensive overview of all the mitigation measures presented in the certified EIR for the general plan and the targeted zoning ordinance update. The applicable mitigation measures for the project were identified and will be diligently implemented for this project. It should be noted that there are two existing oil wells on the property. According to Calgem records, one is located to the east, and that was drilled in nineteen forty-five, abandoned in nineteen seventy-four. And there is another well towards the north of the property, which was originally drilled in nineteen forty-five and abandoned in two thousand and one. That does make the property within the city's methane zone. However, the proposed buildings will not cover or impede access to those two wells, and the project will adhere to chapter one seventeen, which is the oil and gas ordinance of the Santa Fe Springs Municipal Code. And as far as traffic, there was a VMT study prepared by Urban Crossroads. It should be noted that uh, as, as indicated, the hundred and ten thousand five hundred square foot commercial business park that was identified in the EIR was, is, was expected to generate a total of four thousand four hundred and seventy-six daily trips. However, the specific project before you tonight is anticipating to uh, generate seven hundred and fourteen daily trips. Therefore, there is a, uh, there are three thousand seven hundred and sixty-two fewer trips with this project than what was identified in the general plan EIR. However, as you'll note in condition number twenty-three, it has been conditioned that a traffic study will be prepared by a current California-registered professional engineer, and additional mitigation measures may be added after reviewing the study, should the planning commission uh, approve the project. All property owners within five hundred feet were notice of the public hearing on August third. No comments or inquiries were received. And the notice was also published in the Woody Daily News on the same date. And for your consideration tonight regarding the tentative parcel map, it is in compliance with the State Subdivision Map Act. The proposed parcel map is compatible with the goals and objectives of the city's general plan. And the proposed project will meet and exceed all the city's zoning ordinance requirements. And for your consideration of the two DPAs, the proposed project will be consistent with the purpose of the ML zone, which it's intending to be uh, changed as. And the two proposed industrial buildings are comparable to other high-quality industrial buildings that have been recently approved in the city. And lastly, the proposed project is substantial, is a substantial upgrade to the existing site conditions. Therefore, staff recommends that the planning commission find that the project meet the requirements for an addendum to a certified EIR pursuant to one, section one fifty-one sixty-four of CEQA. Approve the tentative parcel map. Approve both DPAs subject to the conditions as stated in the attached resolution. And finally, adopt resolution number two four eight dash twenty twenty-three, which incorporates the planning commission's findings and actions regarding this matter. That concludes my presentation. I do have the applicant in the audience, as well as the city's traffic engineer, should you have any questions.
Thank you. And do any of the commissioners have questions at this time for planning staff? Go ahead, Commissioner.
Um, with Coons going away, how is that structured? Is Orbis purchasing the city's property? I understand that it goes to the city council, but I'm just curious about the structure of that.
Um, I would probably defer to Oh, okay, the applicant says they can answer that one.
Okay, and then also if there's infrastructure like underground utilities, sewer laterals, things of that nature, what happens to that?
Yes, they will answer that for you.
My question is, is pertaining to the existing businesses that are there, like Silvadius Party Rental, who has been servicing the Santa Fe Springs community. Um, what's going to happen to them?
Yes, I will defer to the applicant to speak on the terms of the existing leases and their um, plans for new tenants.
Thank you. So at this time, I'd like to open the public hearing at six fifty-four. And I'd like to call the applicant. Um, should you wish to speak, of course, sir, please approach the podium, state your And I'd like to call the applicant. Should you wish to speak, of course, sir, please approach the podium, state your name, city of residence, and you have three minutes.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you, planning staff. Uh, appreciate everyone's time and consideration for our project. Um, Raoul, great job presenting. Congratulations on the upcoming U C I graduation. The way you presented, we've got a spot, you know, for an intern in the future, the way that you're presenting these days. So thank you. Um, I want to address a couple of questions. So regarding the existing tenants, there are really, I guess, two or three tenants. One is the party supply. Um, we've kind of are are, they haven't paid rent for about four months, and we're gonna go ahead and, you know, obviously, not obviously, but but concede that. Um, and we've been working with the existing tenants to relocate. Right now, we're obviously eager to to start the project just from a public safety standpoint. We've got a lot of buildings that have been vacated, a lot of the copper and other things have been stolen of the property. Coons is a public street today, so we can't secure the entire property. But we've been working with the city law enforcement to try to create a safer environment as we can. Um, and so we've been working with the existing tenants to to relocate uh, and find other other replacement locations for them to operate their business. So very aware of that situation. Um, in addition, we've been processing a demolition plan to try to mitigate whatever safety issues exist. As it relates to Coons Avenue, the property, we we bought it a little over a year ago. Uh, Coons is actually an easement. So our property has the fee interest underneath the the improvements of Coons. And so it's kind of a mutually beneficial situation where Coons becomes a maintenance, ongoing maintenance issue for the city. We're vacating Coons, and then we're also vacating public utilities in terms of servicing the property appropriately. Um, and so we're going through the process, working with the different departments to go ahead and execute that plan. So there's no quote unquote compensation for movement of the easement. But at the same time, there's no ongoing maintenance liability of the city with the vacation of Coons. Coons is, it's a a public street today in that easement arrangement that services the five properties or or a little less, the three properties that surround Coons. And so with that comes the vacation that would ultimately go to city council along with the vacations of the the easement areas. Um, other than that, we're talking to a couple of headquarter users that were excited to put in the property. I will say that the way that Vince introduced the project at times, we may be looking for the video of this and put it in on our property website. Um, but we're excited about the project. Santa Fe Springs is an incredible place to do business. We find it very fortunate that that we're here. Grant Ross, I didn't say maybe in the beginning, but managing partner with Orbis Real Estate Partners. Um, and we're fortunate to be doing business here and consider it a true pleasure and appreciate you guys considering our project. And obviously, so I just want to say, we got a land use consultant on our team that that's here to address any questions as well as our traffic engineer.
Do any of the commissioners have questions? Go, sir.
Um, with respect to vacating the infrastructure and utilities, maybe staff, um, how is that going to impact the traffic on Florence? Because it's already heavily congested.
Yeah. So the good news is that the way that the city's arrangement is and our conditions of approval, any public, you know, in impediment, if you will, in terms of our development is it, we're really just tying into existing infrastructure. So any Coons vacation wouldn't impact traffic. And as it relates to any tie-ins associated with the city improvements, we pay in in Luffy. I think there's, I forget what one of the in Lufy's is, but it's about a hundred and thirty six thousand. So that if and when the city goes to repave, where we do those tie-ins, they do it at one time when they go and put the ultimate improvements in. So that's that's when it when it takes place. So we're not going to create any additional, uh, you know, traffic concerns, hopefully, and we'll obviously work with the city ongoing, you know, neighbors and everyone else to make sure that, you know, we don't create any sort of impact to the area. So.
In regards, I'm sorry, um, I I'm trying to picture the the docking stations. Um, are they going to be visible from either Florence or Norwalk? Where where's the interest going to be for the docking stations?
Yeah. So so we screen them well in terms of the building layout. So you've got office pods and 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 building that actually screens it as well as, uh, you know, uh, screening in terms of fencing and other things that that further, uh, provide screening. But the way that we did the layout and worked closely with the city, that actually provides a natural scheme in addition to the to the secure truck work that we'd have.
Are there any other questions from the commissioners? Is there anyone from the audience wishing to speak on this matter? Planning Commissioner's Secretary, were there any comments submitted via email also on this item number ten?
No, Madam Chair.
I was just gonna let everyone know, we went above and beyond, and we're doing a clearer agreement, which is kind of the gold standard. It's kind of like a lead certification, if you will, in terms of the mitigation that we're providing for the methane and everything else in the area. So as it relates to our specific site, we're going above and beyond, you know, uh, and spending the money to to clean up the site appropriately. It's not a requirement of the city, but it's, you know, what we're doing in kind of a good faith effort that hopefully other people will will take notice and process something similar.
Thank you, sir. I would like to close the public hearing at seven P M. Do the commissioners have any other comments regarding this matter? If not, is there a motion to approve resolution number two, four, eight, dash, two, zero, two, three for Sequo addendum to the city's certified environmental impact report, E I R, for the general plan and targeted zoning ordinance update, schedule two, zero, two, one, zero, five, zero, one, nine, three, tentative parcel map number eight, four, one, one, six, development plan approval, case number one thousand, and development plan approval, case number one thousand and one. May I have a motion?
All motion.
May I have a second? Commissioner Riala and Commissioner Mora, Planning Secretary, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Flores.
Aye.
Commissioner Jimenez.
Aye.
Commissioner Mora.
Aye.
Travis Charriola. Chair Carvajal.
Aye.
S S five, zero.
Thank you. So ordered.
Madam Chairwoman, the commission's action on this item shall become effective fourteen days after receipt by the applicant a written notice of the commission's action. The applicant and or any other interested party may file an appeal of the commission's action to the city council. The appeal must be in writing and filed with the city clerk within the previously mentioned fourteen day period.
Okay, item number eleven, public comment. Public comments are now open. Anyone joining us through Zoom can use the raise hand function. If you wish to make a public comment or on any item not on the agenda, the Planning Secretary, we'll see if you have your have raised your hand through the Zoom application. Please note that you will have three minutes to speak. Planning Secretary, do we have any members of the public present that wish to speak today?
No, Madam Chair.
I will now close public comment and move on to the next item. Item number twelve, staff announcements. Are there any announcements from staff?
I have two quick updates for the commissioners' benefits. Uh, if we can cue the slide, first slide. Um, first slide, as you'll note on the aerial there, drone footage of the northwest corner of Lakeland and Laurel. Just wanted to give you a quick update. As you know, this is a affordable housing project um, that will be developed by Richmond Group and the whole child for a total of a hundred and twenty one units. Um, both developers recently received their grading permits and have begun preparing the site for construction. So we've been, uh, anticipated this will probably last about two months. Um, and completion of the project is expected to take approximately one year. Um, second slide. So this is a slide of nine, nine, two, zero Pioneer. It's a industrial, um, business park, uh, three buildings, and this is just kind of a a nice perspective. You know, we don't get the chance to kind of see developments in this form. But as you can see on there, these are walls that have already been formed and just waiting to be tilted up. And if you look at the buildings on the north side, those are partially tilted. And and building one on the west, on the south side, those are waiting to be tilted. So it's just a nice perspective to share and just to kind of give you an update that, uh, construction is moving along on this site. And that's all I have for tonight.
Any other staff? Item number thirteen, are there any commissioners that have an announcement that they would like to share at this time, starting with Commissioner Mora?
Real quick, Merry Christmas to everybody. The reason I say that is, uh, with the parking committee, we're already planning, uh, Christmas stops, uh, programming for all the season's activities are well underway. And we're just, um, four months away from Christmas. So that's about it.
Commissioner Riala.
John's the head of Walmart. Uh, no, just want to say, uh, Rudy, uh, amazing job. Uh, people could go work.
Commissioner Jimenez.
Same thing, Rudy. I was impressed with their, that was your first, uh, agenda. Yeah, great job.
Commissioner Florida.
I mean, I think all the planning staff, you guys do a good job in presenting. Um, so I mean, Rudy, good job, but I think everybody does, uh, what, everybody's well spoken. So.
I was ending it. Yes, everybody knows I always say planning is great, hurrah. But I think it's fabulous that you already got a job offer in front of us. Wasn't that great? He's like, wow, I thought that was fabulous. But, um, Santa Fe Springs Women's Club held our fashion show yesterday. Uh, we had a sold out crowd, so we're tabulating those monies. Of course, all those monies go to scholarships within our youth. And again, I'd like to give a shout out to our leader, fearless leader who's not here, Wayne Morrell, who graciously gives money every year and, uh, provides tickets to our seniors. And he is the only but only buddy, ugh, only person that does that on directors. So I kudos to that and just lovingly that he does that for our seniors. I think that's just awesome. And then I just had asked if we can have an update on the other one.
Actually, Madam Chair, Mr. Morrell is present via Zoom and actually has his hand raised.
Yay, you're fabulous. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. I felt a little insecure because I felt ignored. But it's okay. I just wanted to say that I'm there in spirits. I'm here in Fresno, taking some classes, but I see that everyone did an excellent job. So although I'm not there physically, I'm there in spirit. So thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I think I'll 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 end by responding, I I believe, um, chairperson. Um, you had a question regards to this, an update on the Sonic site. And if you recall back in July twenty fifth, we we did provide an update on the homeless issue and the maintenance of the property. Um, it's, I believe, uh, you're now looking for more of an update on the development itself. Um, or I don't believe we're prepared to provide you with an update tonight, but we can certainly return at your next meeting and provide you with a detailed report on the development side.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that. With that, if there's nothing else, I'd like to adjourn the meeting at seven, oh, eight.